You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening, welcome to the January 9th, 2017 regular Fayetteville City Council meeting. This time I would like to invite Pastor Minor of the Kingdom Global Ministerial Alliance to come forward, please, and lead us with invocation. And Archbishop Minor, if you would remain with us at the podium after we say the pledge, I'd love to ask you a couple of questions about your ministry. If everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I'm an old chaplain assistant, so I have to write these things down. Let us pray. Father of all that is good and perfect, this city comes before you in this great year 2017, seeking your perfect and perfected will. This year will present its own unique challenges, and just like in years past, this city will seek your guidance and wisdom as she seeks out strategies and ideas for meeting those challenges head-on. It is our collective prayer that the leadership of this city will continuously seek your way, obey your will, and stand on your word in all matters that are brought before them. Bless the mayor, Nat Robertson, and his administration as they provide the leadership necessary to lead a great city like Fayetteville. Bless the city manager and every sworn and uns sworn member of this city's government, and allow them to lead this city with joy and discernment, peace and tranquility. Let no decision be made without your divine consultation. Bless this city council as they come together to govern this city, and allow them to do so with unity of heart, mind, and spirit, and that even in times of disagreement, they will find a unifying peace and solidarity that will be for the good of the people who look to them for governmental guidance. Bless the police chief, Anthony Kelly, and the men and women of the Fayetteville Police Department, both sworn and non-s sworn, uniformed and civilian. Let them protect and serve with the greatest level of professionalism. Give your angels charge over them. Escort them to their respective assignments. Give them wisdom, discernment, and strength to face every call, every traffic stop, and handle every person they encounter with care, calm, and courtesy. And allow each individual, whether victim or suspect, show them that same level of courtesy, professionalism, and respect. Bless the men and women of our fire department and EMS. Thank you for their bravery and for their kind-heartedness. Bless them to serve this great city and her residents with zeal and grace. No matter how hot it gets or how intense the flames, you be their cooling source, their way out, and their guiding light. Bless the families of all those who serve this great city of history and faith, and as they loan their loved ones to us for service, allow us to return their loved ones back to them with joy. This we pray, in the name of Jesus, amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Archbishop Minor, you've been a friend of the cities and the police department for some time, but tell us something about yourself.
Well, I am Archbishop John Anton Minor. I am the national president of Kingdom Global Ministerial Alliance. We are headquartered here in Fayetteville with a DC bureau on K Street in Washington, DC, and several chapters around the country. I represent a collaboration of 300 senior and executive-level clergy. I am retired military, retired from Fort Bragg in 2011. After coming to Fayetteville after deployment, which sent me here instead of back to New York City, I found Fayetteville to be a place to call home, and set root here and have been here ever since doing the work of the ministry. KGMA is not a church, as many people believe, because they see me always in clergy. I'm mandated to wear it at all times when on official business. But KGMA is an alliance of leaders that have a heart for the community. We are alliance of senior and executive-level clergy bishops and above who have made a choice to serve the public outside of elected office. We work with elected officials, we work with governmental agencies to bring about change in the community. One of our prime and our anchor program for KGMA is what we call the Hope Project. And the Hope Project provides all of our outreach services, so whether it is responding to an emergency like Hurricane Matthew, or helping someone pay their rent, or helping someone get off the street, or ministering to a prostitute at 3:00 in the morning, or responding to the police department when they call, that is all done through the Hope Project, and it is our anchor project with KGMA.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Archbishop Minor, I'm sorry, a couple of the council members have asked me to see if you would enlighten us for some divine vision that you may have tonight's game, Clemson or Alabama?
It's a setup.
It would really be, I'll go Alabama.
I want to recognize Mr. Arp to talk about Cafe Conversations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Cafe Conversations will be taking place Tuesday, January 17, 2017, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Kiwanis Recreation Center. This is an opportunity to provide input into the city's strategic plan, and registration is limited to 60 participants. If you're interested, please call the city at 433-1474. That's 433-1474, or you can email directly. The email address is cafeconversations@ci.fay.nc.us to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arp. Ms. Twiddell, is your better half with you, or?
He's not, he's still traveling.
Okay. Come on down front.
This time we're going to present, Mayor Robertson's going to present a Human Trafficking Awareness Month proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery that is a serious problem, it is a borderless crime against individuals that violate the most basic human rights and deprive victims of human dignity and freedom. And whereas human traffickers use violence, threats, deception, and other manipulative tactics to coerce women, men, and children to engage in acts against their will, and whereas the city of Fayetteville is committed to working together to protect its residents through awareness, prevention, and protection, and whereas in the city of Fayetteville, organizations like Five Sparrows and the Fayetteville Dream Center work tirelessly to assist those whom have fallen prey to human traffickers. Now therefore, I, Nat Robertson, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, and on behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of January in the year 2017 in honor of Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Thank you. Council, I think, yes, absolutely. I think council is aware of many of the great relationships we have throughout the city with private faith-based and private and public organizations. Certainly, the Dream Center and Three Sparrows is reflective of those partnerships. Ms. Twiddell, could you give us a little, we were just sharing a smile and good news on spreading awareness, would you elaborate?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, over the last three years, we've done, we've made great strides in joining other organizations and spreading prevention awareness to area high schools through Q&amp;A panels and educating the staff and ultimately the students on what the crimes involve with human trafficking and how not to get roped up into them through dabbling in drugs and partying and things like that. But the good thing is, we actually moved a girl this morning with the Fayetteville Police, some detectives from Roxy, into a program out of state where she's safe. There's some people that are still looking for her right now, so we left out of a different bus station. But we probably have helped over 120 girls over the last three years, and most of them are Fayetteville locals. This young lady happened to be from New York State, but our police and sheriffs are doing a great work in our city with us.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, Councilmember DeViere, if you would join me down here, please. Councilmember DeViere, eyes of the city are going to be on you for the next 18 years.
Or chief.
Or the chief's eyes are going to be on you for the next 18 years. Mayor Protim.
Yes, sir. Councilmember DeViere, welcoming of new member of Council District 2. A, I guess. Mayor's proclamation, whereas life on earth is a precious commodity, especially during a time when lives in parts of the world are being squandered by whims of political turmoil, and whereas each new life brings with it hopes and dreams of a better place on earth, and whereas children of today become leaders of tomorrow, and thus holding their hands those hopes and dreams for a better world, and whereas a new life among many recently joined this family of a man, that being Grayson Joseph DeViere, who was born to Jenny and Kirk DeViere on 11th day of December in 2016 at 9:27 AM, and weighing five pounds and 12 ounces, and being 19 inches long. Now therefore, I, Nat Robertson, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, on behalf of the city council and the 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of December a special time of reflection and appreciation, and thus honoring Grayson Joseph DeViere as the representative of a generation that truly embodies our hopes and dreams of the future.
Mr. Mayor, may I point out that this is his first one? He says it's the only one.
May I point out it would be my only one?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I might get in trouble for that now.
Parenthood is certainly an institution.
Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate that. It's very kind and thoughtful of you, as well as this council, and I appreciate all the kind words from council, as well as the staff who reached out to me in a time about five weeks earlier where we weren't expecting him to come as early as he came, but we're blessed because he's healthy, and I appreciate all the thoughts and prayers along the way. So, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is very special.
Thank you, sir. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. That'll entertain a motion at this time. Councilmember Wright is there, seconded by Mayor Protim. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Council item 6.0 is the consent agenda. I'll go to Councilmember DeViere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.06.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wright. Discussion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Okay, that is seven to three. Councilmembers Jensen, Hurst, and McDougal voting against. Those in favor, Councilmembers Crisp, DeViere, Wright, Arp, Robertson, Colvin, and Moan. Motion passes. Councilmember DeViere.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, and it's going to be for discussion, a move to disapprove the MOU for the youth program with 3D AG LLC.
Okay, and there's a motion, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Floor is open. Mr. Moan.
Like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDougal. Mr. Moan, McDougal, is there discussion on the motion? Oh, Ms. Jensen.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to sustain from the vote, seeing that it might be a conflict of interest.
Okay. For the appearance of conflict of interest, we're going to need to vote on that, council, so we can do that very.
Got a motion on the floor.
Yes.
The motion to be excused with supersede, the substantive motion.
So, those in favor, do I need a second? Do we carry that like a regular motion? Okay. Seconded by Mr. Moan. Any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, this is to excuse Councilmember Jensen. And that is unanimous. Now, back to the original motion to approve item 6.6 on the consent. That was a Moan-Mdougall motion. Any discussion? No further discussion, I'll ask for your vote. And that is eight to one. Voting against is Councilmember DeViere. Those in favor, Crisp, Wright, Arp, Robertson, Colvin, McDougal, Hurst, and Moan. Once or twice a meeting, I'll slip my glasses on to read something. This is one of those times. We're entering into item 7.0, which is a public forum. This is the time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice on what goes on within their city. Due to policy restrictions, this forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. And each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on items related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have already signed up with a clerk prior to the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may appear later, which there's not one, we ask that you hold your comments. When your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. And when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, that's an indication you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend that time. There are a few rules in speaking at these public forums that we ask the speakers to adhere to. Speakers shall not discuss the following matters during the public forum. Those include personnel, litigation, property acquisition, attorney-client privilege, confidential, and matters that are subject to public hearings. So, with that being said, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mayor, we have four speakers signed up for this evening. The first speaker is Mr. Richard Colbreth.
Welcome, Mr. Colbreth.
Mr. Mayor and fellow city councilmen, my name is Richard Colbreth. I live at Scotty Hill Road in the city of Fayetteville, and we have a problem on our street that I notified the Traffic Service Division. They monitored it for 48 hours, and 839 vehicles traveled that road a day, which is 161 less than 1,000 that the city requires if you want to have speed humps installed. The city traffic division engineering service put down speed and volume data across the road, and the average speed was 30 miles per hour, and 85% of the speeds were in excess of 37 miles per hour in the 25 mile per hour zone. Now, on Scotty Hill Road, there are two churches, and it's Cornerstone Baptist Church has a daycare and a school, and they run at least half of Scotty Hills. And past their athletic field is another church, and that's the Jesus Christ for Latter-day Saints, and it runs a good quarter of the road. So, there's not much road left for people to speed. And I have lived there for 17 years, and I know that in that 85% of them over the speed limit, some of them are doing in excess of 25 miles per hour over the speed limit. The Scotty Hill, I believe it's on Sycamore Dairy Road, is a police department out there, a branch, and they have sent officers over there to monitor the speed, but they park on the road, and they can only track vehicles that are coming or going. So, they can't hide in a bush with a radar gun and catch the actual speeders. And we do have a problem on Scotty Hill Road with the people speeding in that neighborhood. And one of the...
Thank you, Mr. Colbreth. Chief, would you get with Mr. Colbreth maybe? Great, thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Bernard Thomas.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
My name is Bernard Thomas. I'm retired military. I'm here about a situation regarding a Fayetteville police officer. I was falsely accused and convicted of a crime I did not commit. I'm here to clear my name, and I also seek justice in this situation.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you right there because I have the privilege of doing that. Have you spoken with any staff members yet?
Yes, I have.
Okay, have you spoken with the police department?
I spoke with the chief.
Okay, all right, that's about as high as it gets because we're not allowed to discuss personnel matters at this junction. You know, yeah, that's the professional standards, or the chief of police can help you with that. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. James Kenneback.
Welcome, Mr. Kenneback.
Good evening, Your Honor, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Kenneback. I reside at 7909 Ancon Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28304. This is in regard to the E. Smith House on Blunt Street. Dr. Smith had that home built in 1902, near where the old Fayetteville State University was. He only lived there in the house for seven years until 1909, when the new Fayetteville State University was opened on Murkison Road. He lived on Fayetteville State University campus for 25 years, from 1908 until his death in 1933. Dr. Smith lived on the campus for over 25 years in what was then the principal's house. It currently serves as the alumni's house at Fayetteville State University. The vinyl siding, the brick veneer, the replacement of the windows, and the changes to the porches has compromised its integrity. Dr. Smith was not only a leading educator in the black community, he was also a savvy businessman. He accumulated 25 houses and lots, one storehouse, 16 vacant lots, and more than 240 acres of land in Cumberland County between 1900 and his death in 1933. The importance of the house on Blunt Street has... historically would be huge if the effort had been made in the past 80 years to preserve it. Apparently, no one thought about that until now, when the refurbishment costs could easily hit $500,000 or more. Other than hanging a sign on the front of the house, there has apparently been no effort made by anyone to organize a fundraiser, ask for donations, or otherwise create a fund to renovate this house. If you call the number on the sign located on the front of the house, the gentleman will tell you, "We're just waiting for the city." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keneback. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mrs. Elaine Keneback.
What a coincidence. I bet you all know each other.
Yes, we do.
Welcome.
My name is Elaine Keneback. I live at 7909 Ancon Drive in Fayetteville. And I am here representing Heritage Square Historical Society. For over 100 years, we've struggled to keep our historical property at 225 Dick Street afloat. We have several significant fundraisers a year. We rent our property for weddings and other celebrations, and continually ask for donation dollars. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) with an all-volunteer staff. First of all, I would like to make it very clear that I am representing a historical society, and I have no objection to E. Smith's home being preserved. If restored, its preservation and consequent foot traffic along Blount Street would go even further to improving the characteristics of the neighborhood Dick Street, which is where Heritage Square is located. We at Heritage Square Historical Society would like to offer a permanent home for the E. Smith House if the city will fund its complete renovation. I'm only here to inquire about the city having a quarter of a million dollars to spend on this home when it has never been able to help in the preservation efforts of the three historical homes at Heritage Square, despite numerous requests in the past. In fact, the city's main effort to date has been to encourage the demolition and/or removal of one of the historical buildings there when we were having trouble raising private funds for its renovation. Perhaps others interested in historic preservation in Fayetteville have had similar experiences in getting little or no city support for their efforts. So, I'm basically here to ask you to explain to me, what kind of funding does the city of Fayetteville have available for historic preservation? How did the friends of the E. Smith House engage your attention and secure $250,000? How do you evaluate the importance of these various properties to all of Fayetteville's citizens? Is this a process that Heritage Square Historical Society, a nonprofit organization existing solely on volunteer efforts, can take advantage of? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keneback.
May we have no further speakers?
Thank you. We will close the public forum. Counsel moved to item 8.0 or 8.01, which is the festival park lease for Congressional District Office. Mr. Jay Reinstine.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I think I am the one that's keeping you from going to the national championship game tonight at 8 o'clock, so I'll try to keep it brief. Again, as you see in your council packet, with the recent redistricting of U.S. congressional districts, districts eight and nine are now in our area. And we were approached several months ago from Congressman Hudson's office about acquiring space in Fayetteville. Initially, they were looking at the R.C. Williams Building, which is, and they had been working with PWC. After considerable discussion, Festival Park Plaza is more desirable because it's actually in their district. We've provided you with a few options that we would like you to consider this evening. And I also have Billy Costangie here from Congressman Hudson's office, should there be additional questions. As you can see by the options that we've provided for you in the packet, the first one is option A, and that would be for 1,252 square feet. At the current amount available, we would have to lease it to them for $10.54 a square foot, based on the dollars available in their current budget. And there would be a total variance to the market rate of about $26,400 a year. So, in other words, if we were renting it at market rate, we wouldn't have that variance. But being that we have to discount the rate for option one, that would be 1,252 square feet at a variance of $26,000. Option B, we've identified less space. It's about 800 square feet. It's two offices. Actually, it's one large office and one small office. The large office can be divided into two. That is 800 square feet. Based on the $1,100 a month that we would be, they would be able to budget for this space, it would actually give us the market rate costs of $17.25. There still would be additional costs of approximately $10,000 for outfit. And then that would be the responsibility, unless we can come up with another solution, the city would pay for that. The third option, option C, is really they would just pay the maintenance cost, which would be about $4.50 a square foot. And there would be a variance over the two-year period of about $31,000. That would mean, again, if, being that it's below market rate, we're not able to collect the full amount of rent. And then finally, option D is paying at full market rate for the 1,252 square feet. And there would be a total amount of payments for that would be about $53,000. Again, with the understanding that the congressman's office has approximately $1,100 to work with per month, that's where we came up with these options. It should be noted that the space at Festival Park Plaza has been vacant for approximately 18 months. And the last time the space was shown to anybody was in September of 2016.
Thank you very much. Have a couple of lights. Mr. Arp and Mr. Crisp.
Well, Mr. Arp, Mr. Mayor, I was going to, I was prepared to make a motion, so I'll defer to the others for discussion.
All right. Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Reinstine, I'd like to clarify a few points.
Yes, sir.
Because I think this is significant. $1,100 a month, and the term would be two years. We would realize about $26,400 on some footage that we are not getting a dime on at present. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then for $10,000 outfit, we still come out over a two-year period, $16,400 in the blue.
That would be correct.
To me, it's a no-brainer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colvin.
He had a couple of the points that I had. One about the outfit. I understand that these leases have to be at a maximum of two years, which are consistent with the terms of the congressman. The $1,100 that you referenced, you said they have that budgeted. When I understood it upstairs, it was more so that's what you were paying at the previous
That's what they're...
...location.
Correct.
In Rockhamout, Rockingham?
Rockingham.
Rockingham. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Sorry. And I'm Billy Costangie. I'm deputy director for Congressman Hudson's office. I just wanted to clarify. When we were talking, $1,100 is what we're paying right now in Rockingham. So, we still have to go through the House to approve a budget for it. So, whatever number you all decide on, the House still has to approve it. I was just using that as a point, that right now, we're paying $1,100 in our current space.
So, if it's $1,100, if it's $1,500, it still has to go through the same approval process?
Correct, correct. So, that's not, budgeting for that is, I guess, isn't a correct term. But that, in terms of what we've paid the last couple of years, is what we have been paying.
Okay. All right.
Just to clarify on that.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Reinstine, which one of these options, I can get my calculator working, shows the amount of footage that they would get for, let's say, $1,100? So, in other words, if that was a budget, that would equal, you know, X amount of square feet versus the entire space. Is it possible to subdivide it?
Right. So, the entire space in Suite 215 is about 5,400 square feet. We're talking about on options A, C, and D, 1,254 square feet. On option B, it's about 800 square feet.
And the reason I was asking, you heard the mayor in my ear, was pointing out that we hadn't received any rents there in the last year, in this particular specific space.
18 months, correct.
It is, but I wanted to note that this is a, this is a building that we're operating in the red, not the blue, like Councilmember Crisp said, right now. And I know that the valuations of these, of these, of these commercial spaces are based on rents, to some degree, rents received. And so, wanted to make sure that we had a level that wasn't going to hurt valuations in the event that this was sold or returned back to the tax rolls. So, that was the premise of my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Moan.
Oh, Mr. Reinstine, regardless of which option the collective council ends up on deciding tonight, we're trying to sell the building, get it off, you know, put it back on the tax rolls. Is it possible that whichever option, that there's a 30-day, 45-day vacancy clause that should a person, a group, want to purchase the building, and they are not comfortable with the amount of rent being paid by the congressman's office, is that something that could be added in there that congressman and his staff understand that? They go into this knowing that should the building be sold and the new owners, the sale is contingent upon them paying a higher rent, you know, well, you know, we want to sell the building, and we also want to help the congressman out. Is that something that could be put into the agreement?
Absolutely. I talked to Billy Costangie before the meeting, and that can be something that is written into the lease.
Okay. Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Which option's the best option?
Well, staff was recommending B, because it gives us the market rate, less square footage, but it gives...
Which is the best option for the congressman?
And honestly, we aren't, we aren't allowed to discuss that, like lowering rates or anything like that. I mean, look...
I'm talking about square footage.
Square footage, I mean, if you want to talk staff-wise, we're going to have two full-time staffers in there. I'm going to be splitting time between this district office and our other district office in Concord. Congressman's going to be there some. We're going to have constituents coming in. So, I mean, if we have more, we will take it. And the 1,200 and some square feet that we looked at, I mean, that space would be perfect. But we will make whatever work for us.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the council authorize the manager and staff to negotiate a lease. That's a win-win for the city and for the congressman, consistent with option B, but not necessarily concrete tied to option B. How's that?
Option A or B?
Yeah, option A or B, whatever works out best. The idea is to make it a win-win.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Wright.
Can you restate that? Make it A, Jim.
Councilman Colvin, you're going to be watching the game on DirecTV on my phone. No, I can't. I'm just messing with you. I would move that we authorize the manager and staff to negotiate, to execute a lease consistent with option A or B above.
A or B.
Whichever one's the best. They're going to negotiate a lease and then come back.
No, they don't need to come back. Just have them notice.
Or just to... Doug, I'm trying, I'm trying to give the manager some latitude here.
The manager says he's got it.
So...
Discussion.
Okay. All right. Seconded by Mr. Wright. Discussion, Mr. Crisp.
Yes. Option A, what did you say the outfit cost was going to be to the city?
The upfitting cost, still approximately $10,000.
For option A.
That's correct. I think it would be, actually, it's a little less. Option B is closer to $10,000. Option A could be between $6,000 and $8,000 with the outfit. And it could even be less than that.
Well, if we're going to give the congressman an office, we need to give him an office that I can come over and lounge about in every now and then.
Then that would be A.
All right. No further, no further lights. No, oh, Mr. DeViere.
Sorry, I just have one question, Mr. Mayor. So, are both of those fair market rate? I'm just, back to Mr. or Mayor Protem's point about valuation.
The market rate for option B, that is really where you're getting market rate with the 800 square feet. You're not getting market rate with option A. You're at about $10.54 a square foot instead of the $17.25.
So, Mr. Arp, your intent is to give the manager some flexibility to negotiate the best contract, to maintain a valuation, and minimize the cost to the city.
That's correct, and occupy that space.
Mr. McDougal.
I was going to simply say, market rate is really what a willing seller is willing to give. It is what a willing buyer is willing to give the seller. It's not, you can't set some, it'll be sitting there, you know, I got a brother-in-law, say, he's trying to sell his car, but he wants one price, but people only willing to give, his car going to be sitting there. It's been sitting there for two years already. So, to tell me what the market rate is, it's what somebody's willing to pay you. That's the first thing you learn in business. I mean...
Great point. Thank you, sir. Mr. Crisp, again. You're not going to watch the game tonight.
And the reality is, we don't need to be concerned about the market rate because we're not getting anything on those properties now. Some dollars is better than no dollars. But if we're going to do this, let's give the congressman what he needs.
Yes.
And I'm not a Republican, and he is. But I still think we need to give the congressman what he needs. He's my congressman now.
Thank you. Mr. Moan.
I mean, looking at the square footage, you know, the 1,250 is, you know, for, you know, two full-time, plus two part-time, plus visitors, plus constituents, staff members from city. I think something closer to the 1,200 would be the best. And they just work the best price. You know, 1,100 a month is what was approved. The organization might approve 1,250 a month until they ask. So, maybe you say, hey, we'll offer you the 1,250 square feet at 1,300 a month. And then they may come back and say, no, you only have a budget of 1,250. So, I mean, at least, at least let's just try to get close to 1,250 square feet. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, sir. No more lights. Let's vote, please, on the Moan-Wright motion.
On the Moan-Wright.
Who that was? Oh, Arp, Arp-Wright. I'm sorry.
They're not looking like that. Same smile.
All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We look forward to being here. As a reminder, before I entertain the motion to adjourn, there is a water main break on Rayford Road near Hope Mills Road. It is still below freezing. If you are traveling that way, please be careful. That will turn into black ice within minutes. So, please be careful traveling home. Seeing no further action on the agenda, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.